Call the regular city council meeting on October 21st, 2014 to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Milton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Under consent, we have the approval of October 7th, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2014-066 authorizing the city manager to sign a contract amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Metro and Washington County regarding a joint industrial site readiness and planning grant benefiting Sherwood's Tonquin employment area.
I move consent.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Citizen comments? Jim Claus.
Take a look at those photographs, and Mr. Butterfield has a sign on the entrance into the polling place. Read the statute. It is a no-no. It's a big no-no. Now, what did you do about that? Well, let's see, I've seen all this passion over petty things that really don't amount to anything, but we try to run them in the newspaper. Of course, when you're passionate about something, you should be able to denigrate free speech. Now, you're gonna ask, why am I telling you this? What is now going on in this town is totalitarian in format. You never use self-help. We have self-help. Now, I understand if you go to a limited school like Notre Dame, you probably think self-help's alright. It's not. Never has been, never will be. Number two, not only have we got self-help, we've had desecration of speech. And then we've had political officials putting pressure on landowners to force tenants to take down their political speech. That's censorship. Now, I was lucky enough when I went to Stanford to get into the six out of ninety that studied the history of Western civilization. It was inevitable that the next great industrial revolution and progress of our society would come out of Silicon Valley, because that's where Stanford is, nine thousand acres and one of the most progressive, thoughtful-thinking industrial parks in the entire United States. They believe passionately in Dewey and Hutchinson and Holmes' marketplace of ideas. Censor at Stanford, and they will ask you to leave. Refuse to debate, they don't want you there. That's America. America's built entirely on the idea of persuasion. You can do anything you want as long as you persuade, but only the government has limited rights to force. Other societies that are failing always force. Now, here's my deal, Bill. I tease you a lot, give you bad times, you're a good guy. Why am I gonna report you to Lexin Committee? I'd be a nut. Do you get this signed down? That's all I have to tell you. I don't have to go to the newspaper, I don't have to do anything, do I? I don't even have to make a threat. Bring that back to the town, stop this threatening, let the speech go on its own. You may be surprised, but the best-known commercial of all time, Pop-Pop Fizz-Fizz, had the highest name recognition of all times, did not sell any Alka-Seltzer. You know why? Because Alka-Seltzer doesn't work if you've been drinking. It makes it worse. Now, you know, by God, the consumer figured that out all on their own, and Pop-Pop Fizz-Fizz went on to folklore and not selling a product. The people in this town are a lot smarter than, sometimes I think, even including me with my loquacious distinct, they are. Just give them a chance, let the speech go. Bill, I don't think you did that deliberately. I think you'll take it down. I think you'll be embarrassed by that, if I know you. And I know you believe in free speech, because I don't know anybody of your religious persuasion nothing more said than doesn't. But all I'm doing is bringing that to your attention, let's end this thing, and, you know, let people shoot their mouth off, make a fool of themselves, lose or win the election. Let them be tin men on their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is the clock working?
No, I'm doing it right here.
Oh, okay.
I know, yeah.
Daniel King.
Reason I'm here is because, you know, again, free speech is obviously alive and well in newspapers. And I know, a few months ago, I sat up here and I addressed the fact about what the mayor was doing in the Gazette, and he knows as well as I do that he's done the same thing again. And, right here, well, not only did he get one section, he had a letter to the editor in his own section, so he got two places to write in last month's paper. Anyway, he made an accusation about me and Mr. Schultz, who's running for the election also. And I'll just read this paragraph real quick. Moreover, both Ross Schultz and Dan King have exaggerated their qualifications and backgrounds. Neither has shown that they can be trusted, nor do they have the skills to manage Sherwood's future. And I ask you, Mr. Mayor, you made the accusation, you can respond by backing that up. I don't know where you got that. I don't know why you even put it in there.
Because the last time, I remember, when you ran, you said you were a supervisor, and your wife had to defend you in the paper, you're not a supervisor.
Are you? I supervise inmates.
Yeah.
I supervise people every day.
Are you a deputy sheriff, or a corrections deputy sheriff?
I'm a deputy regardless. What difference does that make?
Are all your certifications in, and you're acting and you're saying that you're a deputy sheriff?
I'm acting in the scope of my employment, yes.
Okay.
Okay, as a deputy.
You exaggerated last time.
I did not exaggerate that.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Well, I can tell you one thing that you have exaggerated, okay? Ever since you were finished with your lawsuit against the city, I have here the complete file on the summary judgment, which I've read through, okay? And you've gone around town telling everyone that you were fired, you dragged the city of Sherwood through a sixty-minute segment, saying that we violated your rights. And I'm just gonna read a brief section of this, real quick. It's the, when you were deposed by the attorney. What, let's see, what was the reason that you were turning all of these things in October? This is your, your, things for your position, your chief, your badge, all that stuff. "I felt that I was terminated." Did Mr. Rucker at any time tell you that you were discharged by the city after September 5th, 2007? He did not so. Did Mr. Patterson tell you at any time in September 5th, 2007, that you were being discharged from the city? I don't believe I talked to him. So the answers would be no. Yeah, he never told me that. Did Mr. Schultz at any time after September 5th, 2007, tell you that you were being fired by the city? Give me the date again. After September 5th, 2007, did Mr. Schultz ever tell you that you were being fired by the city? Not fired, no. Did any council member tell you after September 5th, 2007, the city was going to fire you from your employment? I didn't talk to anybody on council that I know of. Do you remember anyone telling you that there was, do you remember telling anyone that was there that you were leaving your employment with the city? I don't remember telling them I was leaving. You were not fired.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's all here, it's all public. If anyone has any question about that, it's available. Thank you for your time.
Mara Broadhurst.
I have to sympathize with the councilors' families who were stalked and harassed. I had similar intimidating experiences in the last election. In my opinion, whether it's bully tactics, threatening phone calls, or out-of-code profiteering, repeat violators have no excuse and should be held accountable. Maybe then, they would stop doing it repeatedly. City policy and code compliance are not trivial issues, and enforcement cannot be left up to the honor system. This includes out-of-order disruptions which only demean the public process. Proper protocol has to be followed consistently, on every level, or civic disease will spread. I hope some of you are able to drive down the highway and see the vehicles in question. What will be the remedy to bring this property in compliance with the code, again? Will the city have to repeat the process, again, repeatedly spending city resources? As long as people can make more money from out-of-code uses, then the fines or penalties imposed, or if these fines and penalties are repeatedly dismissed, there is no incentive to obey the law. If we don't learn from history, it will probably be repeated. Thank you.
Naomi Beloff.
Oh, this side.
Naomi Beloff.
Hi, my name is Naomi Beloff, and I live here in Sherwood. That's funny, I was gonna say tonight, Mayor Bill, thank you for all your work you've done here. The citizens of Sherwood greatly appreciate it. And I feel like you've left a legacy here, and you've turned the tide and things are moving forward. So I really, I just wanna thank you, and I know there's thousands of people that voted you in, that are thankful and grateful for all you've done. You've lowered the SDCs here, so now small businesses can come to town, you've worked to bring transparency. All those things are so important. But more than anything, I feel like you've given the citizens a voice. Because now, when we come to city council, I feel like, you know, there's at least two up there that are listening. And hopefully, with the next election, things will change. And I also wanted to thank you, Mayor Bill, for your endorsement of the three people that did ask you for endorsements in their campaigns, and that is Dean Boswell, Sally Robinson, and Jennifer Harris. Three residents who are all stellar applicants because of their desire to serve, for no other reason than to just represent us, the rest of Sherwood. So thank you, Mayor Bill. Also, I wanted to bring up something positive that's happening here in one of our small businesses, at Demimos. He has a new chef, who he's now collaborating with Dax, and he is going to plan a special Halloween dinner, on Halloween, and in support of all the small businesses, there's a trick-or-treating, you know, so we can go and get to know who the store owners are and whatnot. So on Halloween, starting at five, we just learned this today, Demimos is having a dinner with a, excuse me, with a Halloween theme, and so in support of their small business, I hope that a lot of people turn out and go to it. Alright, thanks so much.
That's the last comment sheet I have. Anybody else? Okay.
Sure. Thank you. And on top of that, it's on your promise, you go out there and repay that fine.
Okay, and our new business. Resolution 2014-067, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter in a contract with Buell Recreation to purchase and install playground structure and swing set for Stella Olson Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a replacement of the structure at Stella Olson. The last, the last structure was put in in 1998. Structures go twelve to fifteen years, we try to keep ours fifteen to twenty years. At the August four, on August 4th, we provided six options, we actually narrowed it down to six options to take to the Parks Board, asking them to come up with three options that we could take out to Music on the Green for residents to vote on, as well as we held online voting until the 30th of September. We received about 570 votes, which is a lot more than we had at Murdoch Park. But the Parks Board on October 6th, actually on the 13th of August, we actually attended the Music on the Green, and we received 189 at that event. And then on the October 6th, we went back to the Parks Board, and actually, they recommended option D, and that's this option. One thing that, one thing in this structure that was not provided at the beginning, we didn't know if we were gonna be able to afford the canopies, which is a big part of what we heard over the years when we go to replace that structure, was to try to replace it with canopies, because there's no shade. So we took that into consideration when we were looking for different options. And the best pricing that we were able to use, that without going out to complete bid and RFP process on our own, was King County Directors Association, the same association that we use to buy our musco lighting. That's about a seven percent savings on the equipment, and about a five percent savings on the material, as well as all the administrative costs that goes into the RFP, as well as the posting and the paper and everything else that goes along with that. It's not included in that twelve percent savings. So this contract, I do wanna make it clear that it is with Buell Recreation, but it is going through the King County Directors Association, and that's where, when we sign a contract, it'll go through King County, if our city manager signs it, if you guys approve it. So the actual equipment cost comes out to 169,715,38, and that is with installation and their performance bond. And the surfacing material's 63,60, for a total of 176,75.38. And we're asking for a two percent contingency for a total amount of $179,596.88. We do have $170,000 budget for the equipment, so we just come in right underneath that, and then the actual 63,60 will come out of our materials and service budget, because we've gotta buy surfacing material every year anyways for our structures. And then the actual two percent, if we have to actually get into the contingency, hopefully we won't, we'll have to find savings in our budget to make that work.
Questions from council. Do I have a motion?
We approve Resolution 2014-067.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Counselor Butterfield.
Last week, the Bowman had a great day over in Lake Oswego, I just wanna bring that up. Been a long time. I coached youth football for years and years, and Lake Oswego was always a nemesis. So it was a sweet victory to see the Bowman win that game. Along with that, they also had the Booster Club auction last week. For you that were there, it was a pretty good turnout. We are excited about the possibilities of having the Booster Club auction here in our community center next year, so, spread the word. Parks and Rec is working diligently with the, with the, with the city to come up with a final design for the dog park up at Snyder. So we're working on that, as soon as we get a final design, we can get some final numbers, and then we'll go from there, but it's moving forward. Along with that, we're assisting with helping make picks on some of the playground equipment that's going throughout the city. So Parks and Rec's department has, for all, the longest time, haven't had a lot of money or things to do, but here this year, things have been ramping up, and it's looking good for Parks and Rec, which overall is, you know, a benefactor, the city is a benefactor of.
Counselor President Henderson.
Wanted to just make an announcement that Aladdin is this weekend at the high school. If you go to vpafoundation.org, I don't know if there are many tickets left, but wanna encourage you to go to that if you're interested at the high school. Last night was the Cultural Arts Commission meeting, where we had a very good meeting, obviously very excited about the Cultural Arts Center that will be opening, and was brainstorming on some grand opening ideas for probably looking at late January, February now. And we have, is Kristen here? No, she's not here. Is Maggie here?
No, she'll be here.
Okay, we have hired a new center director. We haven't, you have, have hired a new center director, Maggie Chapin, who was working at the Walter Center in Hillsborough, also worked for Tears of Joy Theater down in Portland, and should be a tremendous asset to have. Very excited to see her coming on board. And then also last weekend, the same night as the Booster Club event, was Tipicaw. And I don't know if the chief has a report for how successful you were, or how much fun you had, or anything like that, but always a great event, and I'm sorry I missed it, but I couldn't be in two places at once. And for those people who came and volunteered at the Onion Festival, thank you very much for supporting the chamber, and Counselor Langer might have an update on that, but that was also a very packed Saturday in Sherwood. And that's all I have. Oh, no, I have one, well, I have a question for staff, so I'll save it for city manager reports.
Counselor Grant?
Nothing.
Counselor Langer?
Yeah, the chamber did just come off a very successful Onion Festival, and hopefully everybody in the community got a chance to get out there and enjoy themselves eating onions and chicken. November 11th is the next breakfast, and there are lots of mixers in November, both AM and PM, so take a look at their website for more details and all the dates, times, and locations. The YMCA has their Haunted Teen Center Friday and Saturday, October 24th and 25th. The Harvest Festival is Saturday, October 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. The 24-Hour Walk Run is on November 1st, from 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM. And remember that the all-staff meeting is on Saturday, November 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so the Y is gonna close at 5:45 that night to allow staff all to attend the meeting. And the Y will provide a tent for Given Gobbles, for Given Gobble, Thanksgiving hours are 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's all I've got.
Go ahead, you're last.
So I just, I have a couple on what Counselor Langer said on the Given Gobbles, so that is on Thanksgiving Day. They're taking registrations now. It's a great event, and it supports the Helping Hand, so I encourage everyone to do it. It's really a lot of fun. Kids are welcome, so please do that. I wanted to announce that there is going to be a potluck and workout at the CrossFit Absolute of Sherwood on Friday, October 21st, that's this Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00. It's a benefit for Emma Onderoud, who is fighting leukemia right now. On October 20, or I'm sorry, October 31st, also Halloween, they're gonna do Stuff the Trunk at the Sherwood High School football game, so I encourage everyone to bring a toy, and stuff the trunk for, Christmas toys for kids. The 26th of October is going to be the grand opening for another small business here in Sherwood, the SMJ Performing Arts. It is from 1:00 to 4:00, and it's in the same complex there as Domino's Pizza, you can see that great grand opening. I had the opportunity to go to another grand opening. It wasn't in Sherwood, but it was a Sherwood business that is expanding. The Sherwood Nature's Pet has opened another location in Wilsonville, and they had their grand opening last Saturday. It was great. I invited the mayor, Tim Knapp, of Wilsonville to come, and he graciously accepted, and there were lots of animals there, and it was a really fun event. They had another small business from Sherwood that did the photo booth there, and so they uploaded photos for everybody, and it was a lot of fun. So congratulations to Jennifer and Matt Flanagan to have expanded their business. I also got to go to the Tri-County Gun Club Open House on Sunday. Representative Julie Parrish and Representative John Davis were also there, and we got to shoot some rifles and hear all about the awesome gun club. So that was a lot of fun. This last weekend was also the Washington County Artists Open Studios, and two of our awesome artists in Sherwood got to participate in that. That was Darla Boljack and Sarah Oriella, and I got to go see their works at their, at their studios, and that was pretty exciting, too. Gosh, I, oh, I know. I wanted to also say, the Clean Water Services is supporting a program Tree for All, and our date, it's, there's dates all over Oregon, but our date is November 15th in Woodhaven Park. They are trying, the project purpose is to try to plant one million trees in one year. So please come out November 15th. You can find out more about this project and the different locations that they're gonna do the planting at on jointreforall.org. So I highly recommend that.
Okay, I only have one thing. It's regarding Mr. King's comment. I was issued a letter of termination by the city manager, Ross Schultz, so that's why I was terminated. It was not by the other two that he mentioned. Please read the lawsuit, it's very interesting, so. Other than that, this has gotta be one of our shortest meetings in history. So, I have counsel, now it's the city manager's time, and if he's brief, we'll really get out of here early.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. So I just have a couple reminders for mayor and councilman, for the public. The application process for the vacant city council position is coming up. It is, just as a reminder, Monday, October 27th, at 5:00 PM. Application materials and information is on our website, or you can also contact Sylvia Murphy, the city recorder, about the process. So that's coming up soon, so that's important to note. We are also putting the final touches on our Veterans Day event. It'll be the third annual Veterans Day event on November 11th, at 11 o'clock, at Sherwood High School, so look for that. Mayor, I hope you can attend if you're in town, like you were last year, so we're working on some good speakers, so that will be coming up as well. And then we have one new staff person, and I always like to have the department director introduce his or her new staff, so Julia, can you introduce one of your new staff?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Jeanette Castro, if you wanna just come up, just, I don't know if they'll ask you anything, but at least they can see your face. She's our new engineering tech one with the city engineering department. She has her degree in civil engineering technology from PCC. She's been here just a little over a week, a week and a day, and she was willing to come in here and meet all of you. She's gonna be providing primarily front counter customer service for the engineering department, putting ASBILs into the GIS system, helping with erosion control inspections, permitting, things like that, to kinda help take some of the workload off of staff and allow, you know, the city engineer and the civil engineer to do more of the duties that are their duties. She comes to us with both some public sector and private sector experience, and we had a great candidate pool, and she rose to the top among everybody, and we're happy to have her here.
Thank you very much, I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you very much, I'm very happy to be here.
That's all I had, Mayor, unless there were questions from council, from either myself or any of the directors that are here?
I was wondering if, um, if we have considered taking a look at the shed that's on Sherwood Boulevard, that has been there forever, it's in a little piece of property next to Stewart Terrace, and it now has a "For Sale" sign on it. And, um, we had, we had talked about that at Parks Board a couple, a number of years ago, about whether or not the city would be able to, to acquire that and have it just be a little welcome to Sherwood, you know, park, maybe have a bench, and someday maybe, um, a little trail through there or something, but, um, I don't believe that the gentleman who had been storing parts in there has stored anything there for a long time, but I'm not sure if it's, you know, the building's not worth anything, but, um, I just didn't know if that was something we wanted to pursue. There's really, I don't know what else could possibly go in there, other than just sort of a welcome park or, uh, um, something, so.
We have not been looking at that. Uh, as you heard earlier tonight, we're in the business of trying to sell some of our properties.
Right.
Versus purchasing more, but...
Right. But we have talked about it in the past.
Yes, which I was not aware of, so, um, I guess I'd like to hear maybe just quickly from other councilors, we can look into that, uh, property, and, um, I don't know the history on that property, quite honestly, so. But it is kind of an iconic, I always see people taking pictures there, um, with kids and things in front of the building. It seems like a, uh, iconic spot in Sherwood, so. Any, any comments from others on the council?
Perhaps a, a couple of calls, what it's worth, you know, and what it's owned at as, you know, and, and whatnot, and, you know, I, I would, I wouldn't want you to put a ton of work into it, but maybe just a couple of...
Okay, we can do that. And we'll look into the history, too, if this was an issue in the past, so. Other questions from council?
Uh, go ahead, Council Grant.
Could we give you a, a brief update on the YMCA contract, uh?
Yeah, let Mr. Pesamir, who's been the lead negotiator on that, give a brief update, so.
Yeah, so, uh, real quickly, um, we have met with the YMCA many times, and actually have worked, uh, really well together, I think, to try to, um, get an approved contract, uh, put together. Uh, we kind of came up with a framework of what we thought would work, um, especially in regards to financial terms, and have turned that into some language, um, which we, uh, have given to the Y. The Y has thoroughly reviewed it, and so we kind of have, uh, where we're at, we have where the Y is at, and, um, I think we're at the point where we're kind of need some direction from council on next steps, and so we're working on putting together a confidential memo, um, with Bury, Bury Elsner-Hammond, and, um, that should be ready the first, uh, week of November, so anytime after that, um, probably have an executive session with council and figure out what the next steps would be.
Any other questions?
We have no meeting the first weekend.
That's correct. We do not have a meeting on November 4th, that's obviously Election Day. Uh, we kind of figured most of you would be probably focused on other things that day, and, um, our agenda is pretty light, so we will not meet on Election Day.
Was, was there an email floating around about a meeting this coming Saturday? I didn't understand that email.
No, I think the mayor, because the, you missed the last meeting, um, we tentatively scheduled a potential interview on a Saturday, um, in November.
But that's in a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, it's not anything in the near future.
I didn't understand the email, all right.
And I don't know if that's what triggered it, Mayor, or...
No, that'll have to be after we get all the applications and everything.
Yes.
And the deadline's the 28th on that?
27.
27, okay, so.
I'm assuming that's what the mayor maybe had seen in the minutes, talking about a Saturday meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I just didn't know the date of it, and so, it'll be, yeah, sometime in November.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Meeting adjourned.